That was good. Good evening. Welcome to... I've lost my mind on what day today is. Welcome to the August 6, 2024, regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. My name is Richard Wells. I'm the Chair of the Board, and I'd like to begin. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is public comments. I see we have no one here tonight. So we have a long list. Welcome to everyone. For those of you, some faces have been here for a couple of weeks. I don't know if you're expecting a free giveaway, but... So, public comment will be limited to 21 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. I will keep the three minutes per speaker, and Mr. Milano will keep the 21-minute total time alone. At 30 seconds on your three minutes, I will give you the 30-second heads-up. And at three minutes, if you're still speaking, I will say thank you and ask that you please move on, because I like to get as many speakers to the microphone tonight as possible. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, let's go. So, the first... Is this two speakers? Is this a parent and a child, Vanessa and Ellie Foster? Okay. Let's hold the applause to the end. It takes up time. Please, okay.
I'm Vanessa Foster. I live at 1325 Canton Ave., and I'm just here for my daughter to read something she wrote.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Foster, and I'm going in the fifth grade at Tucker Elementary School. Some things I love about Tucker is that it is very diverse and has very nice teachers. But my school is very crowded. In fact, my first grade class was so big, we had to be in the library. We sometimes had to share our space with other classes coming in to use the library, and that was a little distracting. When I'm walking the hallways, I usually see kids working with teachers out there instead of in their classrooms. We used to have a technology classroom. Now the teacher has to bring her cart into our regular classroom. Sometimes we have to combine classes with the other French group for technology class, because our regular classroom couldn't fit all of us together very easily. If we had more space at Tucker, we could use the old art classroom for art projects again, and maybe kids could get help from teachers in a quiet space instead of in the hallways. I think a new school will help all the schools feel less crowded, so we have more room for more fun. My mom tells me that a new school will be very expensive to build. She says some people might think it is too expensive, but that's okay if not everyone agrees. She says she just hopes that everyone has the chance to decide for themselves in November. I think it is most fair to let everyone in town decide together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Katie Legan? Good evening. And you'll be followed by Andrea Lizzio. So I'm gonna give like an on-deck, so you know that you're up next. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
My name's Katie Legan. I live at 544 Brook Road. I want to first say, I really don't like speaking in public.
Most people don't.
And it's a little intimidating when there's people outside chanting. But we got through it. But first, I want to say that I attended Milton Public Schools, grades K through 12, and I'm a parent of two children who attended Milton Public Schools. My daughter will start Pierce this September. I support our schools. Admittedly, I wasn't thrilled at the prospect of using conservation land for the new school, but I still supported it. I'm not, however confident with the communication and breakdown of the costs associated with the new school. $173 million is a lot of money. As I understand, we recently learned that the school budget was short $2 million, I think. I'm not quite sure of the number, because it's not fully transparent. In any event, it's a lot of money. I also understand that the town is in need of an operational override. I've heard maybe as much as $5 million, but no one seems to really know that or even arrange. And that the new school will have ongoing costs that have not been included in the $173 million number. We have had more than one instance this year where there have been shortfalls in the budget, but have been able to find free cash or ARPA funds that have been left over to cover the shortfalls. These funds are running dry, and we need to fund these same budgets in the years to come. I appreciate all of the Select Board members and the time that's being spent on this and other town issues. And I particularly appreciate the Select Board members who are looking at the big picture and all of the upcoming costs that need to be considered. The debt exclusion for the school should go on a ballot, but first, the citizens of Milton deserve to fully understand the big picture. Our only source for cost estimates and the effects on taxes should not be coming from random people on social media. This leads to distrust and causes confusion. The information should come from Milton officials working together to craft accurate and transparent messaging that you all agree on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Andrea Lizzio, 160 Alvin Ave. Just let the people vote. It's your job to listen to the citizens. It's just a vote. If someone feels the cost is too high, they can vote no. That war drum is being pounded loudly and aggressively, but it lacks meaning. What is the desired outcome by putting this to vote? Is it really about the school? Is it for or against our town and teachers? Is the hope that a larger majority of those that want it and can afford it, can afford the massive tax increases, and/or those that may not fully understand the financial implications of this project, vote yes? We trust our Select Board will look out for the best interests of everyone in this town. This proposed vote is not in everyone's best interest. The exorbitant and very realistic cost implications to our residents to build this new school starts at $173 million. That's before weighing in the additional operational costs in the millions or financing costs that will burden our children for 40 years. It is irresponsible to consider pushing out, at minimum, 10% of our residents, who can't afford thousands more in taxes, or to exclude, at minimum, 10% of families hoping and reaching to move to Milton. We all understand the overcrowding issue, and I've not spoken to one person, and I talk a lot, that doesn't support immediately and aggressively addressing the obstacles facing our schools. But the scope of the ask is beyond the pale. To reiterate what so many other parents have shared, at its core, a great education is about the educators and the support unit with family and community, not the building. By voting on a new school that comes at such a high cost, we are ignoring and even jeopardizing the jobs and lives of our most critical assets of the schools, the teachers. We're ignoring the immediate needs of our schools now and compromising the education of our current students.
30 seconds.
Over the last year or so, I've become increasingly confused and disappointed by the fight for inclusivity, affordability, accessibility for all, followed by an extremely exclusive agenda. I urge everyone to sincerely consider the implications for every resident in this amazing town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am...
Set microphones for television. Go ahead.
I am Lizzie Carroll, 37 Randolph Ave., Chair of the Milton School Committee. Thank you for meeting tonight and taking this vote on the school-building project. I'm here to report back that since your last meeting, the school committee voted to recommend that you place the debt exclusion for building the new middle school on the November ballot. Our recommendation was based on a similar one voted by the school-building committee. Both of these committees represent the input of our Milton Public Schools administration. The school-building committee has worked for more than five years to address our longstanding overcrowding crisis by reviewing all of Milton's options, securing land through the land swap that was unanimously passed at the State House, and bringing forward a school design with a cost estimate. As Chair O'Rourke shared in your previous meeting, the cost that's been proposed is a ceiling, and efforts to refine the plans to decrease costs are underway. Clear information will continue to be shared over the coming weeks and months to keep voters informed. Anyone who says they don't want this school, for whatever reason, should have the freedom to vote no. People who are prepared to invest in our school system should have the freedom to vote yes. Whether and when we have this freedom in Milton is up to the five of you. As the Select Board, you will still have the chance to vote your own formal recommendation on the project as a body prior to town meeting. Your decision tonight should not preclude this process from playing out the way our system is designed to work. If you do choose not to put this on the November ballot, please let us know when you will allow the town to vote. We need a commitment from you. Thank you for your time and your consideration. And whatever you decide, it will be important that we keep working together to bridge the divides that exist in our town over this issue. So I hope that we can help to model that together as we work towards building the new school that our town does need. I look forward to continuing to partner with you in our shared public service to the town of Milton. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, and then Mr. Humphrey.
Good evening. My name is Ed Thomas, and I live at 10 Eager Road. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 9. Thank you, Select Board, for all of your hard work representing our town and for letting me speak tonight. I'm a longtime listener and first-time commenter. As a dad of a three-year-old who will shortly begin her journey through the Milton Public Schools, our education system's quality and capacity is of huge importance to me and my family. But as a frugal person, who is slightly shocked by how much my tax bills have already increased since I moved to Milton, ensuring that we spend our tax dollars wisely is also extremely important to me. After listening to all sides in this debate so far, I respectfully encourage you to vote to put the debt exclusion petition on the ballot in November. I ask this for the following three reasons, which I find compelling, and I hope you do too. First, as many residents as possible should get to weigh in on this decision. And the best time to do that is in November, when turnout will be very high for the presidential election. I've served on a number of condo boards and other associations over time, and one of my guiding principles is that if a measure is going to have a material, direct, and financial impact on an individual, every effort should be taken to solicit that person's input. November is by far the best time to do that. Second, the time is right. The overcrowding issue is not a new one. This problem was first identified in 2008, to my knowledge, and the approximately 350 student overcapacity in the elementary schools has held steady for a decade. For my young daughter and hundreds of her preschool cohorts, many of whom seem to be here tonight, to get any benefit of less crowded schools, we need to act now. We have secured the land with state approval. We've designed the school, and we have a detailed budget from Mr. O'Rourke. So the time is ripe to go to the citizens and ask, "Do you want to proceed with this specific plan?" I've heard arguments that the construction budget is still in flux, and we should wait for certainty. But every time we delay this decision, budgetary changes seem to become necessary, and uncertainty increases. So this seems like a circular argument to me that cannot and should not preclude us from taking definitive action now. Third, we have the wherewithal to debate this fall. This decision will undoubtedly be hard for each resident, like myself, and will likely blur the typical political battle lines across town. I've spoken to neighbors without kids who fully support a new middle school, and I've spoken to parents of MPS students who are very concerned about the tax increase. We now have an ideal window to hear all of these arguments. I'm already seeing great advocacy and resources pop up from all sides with helpful ideas like providing... The Select Board to provide an online tax calculator to estimate the impact on each household. In short, this debate is already happening in my community, in our community, and there is a lot of nuance and thoughtfulness going into it. So let's engage everybody. Thank you, Select Board, for all of your hard work on this issue and for agreeing to meet and take this vote tonight. Please allow us residents to make this very important decision that affects us all.
Thank you. So Mr. Humphries, Ms. Jones, and then Mr. Fahy. Mr. Humphries is first. Do I see him there? Jackson Humphries. Jackson Humphries, Kristen Bagley-Jones, and then Sean Fahy.
I had originally decided to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda, so I'd actually like, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, to give my spot to Mr. Fahy.
Fine with that. Well, within the time, you're more than welcome. Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Mr. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You'll be next.
Appreciate it. Sean Fahy, 202 Old Farm Road. Can you hear me?
I can.
202 Old Farm Road, Precinct 9, town meeting member, member of the Planning Board. First, thank you all for your service. I know it takes to serve in your role, and I appreciate the time and the commitment that you all make. How's that? Is that better? Okay, okay. I'm grateful for the information that was provided, and I spoke with Sean a little bit earlier, before the meeting. I think we're at the information stage right now. This is a really important stage for the residents of the town to understand what's ahead of us. So there's a few pieces of information that I would like the Select Board to ask the school-building committee to provide, which are part of the budget analysis that was presented at the last meeting. First, in our town meeting, Article 37 passed, which is referred to as the Specialized Energy Code. I would like to understand... The values that I saw on the spreadsheet don't articulate whether or not the construction cost has incorporated the Specialized Energy Code cost construction, cost implications that will take place. We know it's more expensive. So I would, number one, I'd ask the Select Board to ask the school-building committee to identify how they have calculated and how much they have calculated for the Specialized Energy Code. That's number one. Number two, cost escalation. I've spent 38 years in the construction industry. There's a $5 million value that's identified as cost escalation. To me, that seems like a really low value for the size project that we're talking about and the timeframe over which this project will be built. Cost will not be locked down by the town until we have a contractor who signs a contract and commits to a value. So I would like the school-building committee to provide to the Select Board how they arrived at that calculation. My third is operational cost. Since this building will be built under the Specialized Energy Code, it's going to be an all-electric building. This will be the first time the town of Milton has an all-electric facility. In this case, we'll have two buildings. I feel it's important information for the Select Board to have to understand what is the cost implications of a building that is built under the Specialized Energy Code. So, all information that the residents can benefit from having. Moving away from cost. The numbers are staggering. Richard, I was attending virtually, because I couldn't be present, but I heard your comments in the last meeting. I think everybody is concerned with the value of $173. I personally am concerned that $173 isn't the value. I'm concerned that it's going to be greater. So what's happened since then is concerned residents are asking, "Is that the only alternative that we have?" My opinion is, we need to provide all the residents with information so they can be satisfied with the decision that they make, an informed decision. We have a resident in town who specializes in modular construction. There's an awful lot of conversation about modular construction. Modular construction is not trailers. I am not an expert in it, although I do know an awful lot about it. His name is Matt Sullivan. I would like the Select Board to ask Matt Sullivan, and he will volunteer to come. Matt has two students in the Milton Public School system. He's been here for 17 years. Prior to being an expert in modular construction, he worked in stick build, which is the alternative to modular, is, you know, component assembly. Stick build is what we refer to as. I think it'd be very helpful for Matt to attend and for you to have an informational session with Matt to understand better what an alternative may be if modular construction does get considered. So that's it.
Mr. Chair, we're over time on this. I think significantly over time. There were no time warnings ever given. Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
I hear you. I got that, Mr. Jones.
Okay, let's make sure that we stick to the plan and not let other people get less time, because someone gets more time. That's the reason why we have these fairness rules in place. I found that to be a violation of those fairness rules. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Bagley-Jones. I live at 88 Pleasant Street. Can everybody hear me okay?
Speak as close as you can.
I'm here to urge you tonight, as my elected officials, to place the school-building project on this November's ballot. I believe our schools are a tremendous risk if we do not take steps forward to correct the current dire strait. Both of my kids are proud graduates of Milton Public Schools, and I will be forever grateful for the education they received. And I am here because I think other people's kids deserve the same thing that my kids got. As many others have said tonight and other times, Milton's school system was the factor, the factor, for my family to move to Milton. Funny story about that. I was in Milton on my third day in Milton, on Otis Street, third day in this town, and my neighbor came up to me and said, "Oh, you have kids?" I said, "Yes, and so..." "override meeting, you better come to. The schools are in terrible shape. Colicott's really bad." And I said, "Oh, my God, what did I do? Why did I move to Milton?" Well, I'm glad to say that I was proven wrong. My kids didn't get to go to the new elementary schools, but they did get to the new Pierce and the new Milton High School. But I'm here again, 26 years later, saying, "Can you please put this vote on the ballot? Can we please do something about the schools?" I saw a video a year ago, about a year ago, where I saw art on a cart is back. Art classes are taken over. Elementary kids are eating at 10:30, because there's not enough room for them. One-on-one instructions for kids with some who need extra help are happening in the hallway. This is not the Milton that my kids went to school in. How did we get here? We got here because, "Build it, and they shall come." We built the schools, and people love the schools. They love Milton, and like my family, they moved here for education. It's a double-dead sword, right? We have good schools. People move here. We need more schools. Yes, it's a beautiful town, safe, all of that, but it's the schools that got me here and many other people. I know that the incoming kindergarten class is on pace to be one of the largest ever, if not ever. There's no room anymore at the inn. The inn is full. Renting trailers, like we did at Glover when my kids were young, short-term solution, and also a very expensive one. The longer you wait to put this vote on, the more expensive this project is going to be. I'm here to say we deserve better, and a delay for the vote on the ballot is not fair. I know we need an operational override, and I'm committing to working on both of those. I don't have a lot of money. I am not rich. I am willing to make the sacrifice. I am willing... Oh, no! Sorry, I get carried away. Anyway, my last question is... You are my elected officials. I am asking you to pull together in this time of need and get along with each other, make this work, represent all of us. It's really important that you lead this town forward. It's really important that this vote go on the ballot in November. Let the residents decide. Thank you.
Mr. Jones will be the last speaker.
Sorry about that.
30 seconds.
Mike Zula, 69 Fairbanks Road. On the question before you tonight, it is not the role of the Select Board to deny Milton residents the right to vote. On the contrary, Select Board members have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure that the people have the right to vote. Now, the Select Board's authority on this matter is under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Your authority under that statute extends only to determining whether the vote is legal and whether its form is appropriate, because Select Board members are subject not only to statutory law, but also to the overarching moral law of our democracy, which is the right of the people to vote. That supersedes everything. And a statutory law, such as Chapter 59, Section 21(c, cannot be used to subvert the overarching moral law of the right of the people to vote. Yes, elections have consequences, but those consequences can never be to prevent the people from voting. You may think that an operational override should come first before the school vote, but that is not for the Select Board to decide. It is for the people to decide. And if this is on the ballot in November, the people can decide by voting, know that an operational override should go first. You may think that $173 million is too costly for a new school, but it is not the role of the Select Board to decide that. It is the role of the people to decide. It is not the role of the Select Board to protect Milton residents from themselves by preventing them from voting. We gave that idea up about 250 years ago. The role of a Select Board member will require you at times to do things that your supporters disagree with. There will also be times when you have to do things that you yourself disagree with in advancing the greater good. Many Select Board members in the past have done that. Now it's your turn. Follow the law of our democracy. Uphold the obligation and the responsibility to put the school vote on the November ballot and let the people decide, as they must, in our democracy. Thank you.
So that concludes Citizen Speak. Thank you all for your comments. Thank you for your time. And we're going to move to item four, which is a discussion by Mr. Milano on fiscal year 2024, year-end results and the fiscal year 2026 outlook. For yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a presentation with a few slides to run through to provide an update to the board on how our year ended and, as we look to '26, where things stand.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a quick question? If I have questions, should I save them for the end?
For Mr. Milano?
Yeah.
Yes. Don't apply to everyone. I don't think he's on...
Yeah, I shouldn't. Okay.
Is that what you went in for?
Yeah, that's what I went in for.
No, and I really only heard one... I know that's a TV mic, but I only heard it come across on maybe one speaker for 10 seconds. And I can't remember who that was.
Test, test, test.
You're laughing.
Test. Is that any better?
A little better.
Okay.
A little better.
I'll try to speak up as well.
Thanks, just project.
Our fiscal year ended. Oh, geez.
That's good.
That was good.
Now I can hear you.
That's super loud.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Our fiscal year ended on June thirtieth. Um, since then, our financial departments have been finalizing where we landed at the end of the fiscal year. So it was timely to provide a broad overview of that. So in terms of the big picture, our revenues were in excess of our estimates of about two point, of more than two-point-two million dollars, uh, driven by three major factors. The first is investment income, um, which was close to over one-point-six million dollars in total, but one-point-two-six above estimate. Building permits, about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars above estimate, and motor vehicle excise taxes of about four-hundred-and-thirty-four million dollars, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars, excuse me, above estimate. That combined with our expenditure turnbacks of about one-point-eight million dollars starts our accounting on free cash in the three-and-a-half to four-million-dollar range as like the first iteration, and that number will be lower than that. But this is where we begin, uh, working on that. The turnbacks have driven, you know, largely by vacancies and turnover as employees who are more senior leave. We usually have vacancies for a short time period before a more junior employee, um, takes over, saving tax dollars and returning money back, uh, to the general fund. And our employee benefits came in a little under again due to some vacancies and then debt service was less than anticipated in fiscal twenty-four. So turnbacks of about one-point-eight million dollars and revenues in excess of budget of about two-point-two. So what is our investment income and why is that number so high? So this is primarily interest earned on town dollars stored at banks and money market accounts, savings accounts, et cetera. The historic trend is much lower than we've been. We have increased our estimates both in twenty-four and twenty-five to capture some of this that we expect to see. But we can't expect that the amount that we brought in twenty-four to be a new norm. This, we expect to be an outlier. And this is driven primarily by interest rate environment, which is now higher than it's been in some time. Again, here you can see the historic trend on, on interest income, where we are far outpacing where we've been for the last twenty years. And again, that's driven in large part by where interest rates are. As you can see with the chart here, interest rates currently are back to highs where they were in oh-six to about the Great Recession in oh-eight, oh-nine. So yes, um, we are earning more on the money that we park in banks and elsewhere. But this is a variable amount that we can't rely on. However, for fiscal twenty-four, we had very strong income, um, here. The other one I wanted to highlight is building permit revenue. As some of the multifamily projects that have been approved start to begin construction, we see substantial increases in permit revenue. Two projects that were permitted towards the end of the fiscal year, um, at seven-eleven Randolph Ave and four-forty Granite Ave, brought in over more than four-hundred-thousand dollars in building permits alone. So that drove our, um, big jump in building permit revenue in fiscal twenty-four. Stepping out of the general fund for a moment, I did want to talk about water and sewer enterprise funds just briefly. These are not paid for by tax dollars. It's a variable income stream, which is depending on how folks use water and sewer. That determines how much money we bring in. This is a place where our usage has been fluctuating basically every other year. It's about a twelve to fifteen percent difference, which means that in drier, drier years where more water, more revenue for both water and sewer, wetter years like last year, much less revenue. We expect, um, we took in less than we expected on water and sewer this year. It has more of a risk on the sewer side. The sewer budget is bigger, but we have less in retained earnings or free cash. So we have less, um, in the bank in case, uh, we have another, uh, lower revenue year again in fiscal twenty-four. Water has a little bit more wiggle room with a higher retained earnings value. And then just as a indication, as you can see, two years were the outliers in the past five. Most of the usage consumption is done July to September, October timeframe, uh, when the irrigation season is upon us. So this is something that, um, will have pressure on our water and sewer rates that we'll be bringing at our next meeting to ensure that our, uh, enterprise funds remain, uh, funded wholly by rate payers and not by taxpayers as they are currently. So stepping back to the general fund again, what does our year-end results mean for free cash? It just is the starting point for that calculation. Free cash doesn't exist as of July one-twenty-four until it's certified again by the Department of Revenue. We expect to do that, um, later this fall. And the year-end results again are just one factor, um, in that. And, uh, in addition, just wanted to provide an update on the stabilization funds. And now that we're at year-end in fiscal twenty-four, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar contribution was made to the general stabilization fund, and these funds also are an interest income that stay within them. So our general stabilization fund has jumped from, uh, just over five million to close to six million dollars over the course of fiscal twenty-four. Capital stabilization and road stabilization likewise experienced some increases. And our, our total amount of our stabilization funds or our reserves is, um, close to five-and-a-half percent of fiscal twenty-five budget, which is above our, you know, minimum target of five percent. As we look to future years, we'll obviously want to try to keep that, um, stable, if not higher than it is presently. These are just some graphs illustrating the growth and then where it is as a percent of our general fund budget. And then in terms of fiscal twenty-six, there's nothing new, uh, that this board hasn't seen previously. I presented these slides, um, a, a month ago. So the status quo persists. You know, we're, we're early in the budget process season. We did do a refresh on our financial forecasts. We did run a level service budget, um, accounting for, you know, the, the things that change year over year. And the bottom line there is we're looking at about a four-and-a-half to five-million-dollar gap in what we need to make up, um, before we can move forward into twenty-six. The reason I want to touch base on this a bit is there's been a lot of talk about needing an operating override. I think our year-end results give us more tools than we had before, um, on the operating override. I can't sit here and say there will be one, there won't be one, but I just thought it was, as we're having this discussion about the school, to update everybody on the year-end results to, to provide that context as it's, it's one of the many factors that, uh, members have raised in terms of the school project conversation. So we certainly don't want to be in a position of funding our budget with free cash. It's not sustainable. It's not good practice. However, um, if we're looking at another year of strong free cash, it is another tool that we have to potentially, um, avoid an override, knowing that that means we're sacrificing potential investments in town departments and the school departments, that it comes with a cost. However, um, it's a little bit more of an optimistic outlook than we were before. But the issue does remain is we don't have a final free cash number. We won't for a couple more months. We won't have final state aid numbers, uh, for many more months. But we have a little bit more information than we did the last time we spoke about it. So I felt it was important to provide that update to the board. So that's what I have on twenty-four to twenty-six. I have a couple of slides on the school project tax impact stuff. If the board wants to see that, or do you want to wait on those?
So just to follow up, and then you can ask any questions you want. So after meeting with Chair Carroll, we did, and listening briefly to Nick and Amy on this, and I told the chair this last week, I asked Nick to do everything we could to try and stow off an operational override to fiscal twenty, to the calendar year twenty-twenty-six. And he's already talking with Dr. Burrows. We're just waiting to see what they could bring forward. This will be a tight year for everyone, as, as the school representatives who are here now and as former colleague Mr. Zullis knows. This fiscal year that we're in now, as all of our members know, this was a really, really difficult year. All the extra money that we had did go to the schools to get them to what they needed. And every other town department went at level dollar, level service, with the exception of contract bonds. This would be a unique thing if we can do this. And I don't want to go any farther than that on this subject right now. But the goal is to try and push an operational override to twenty-twenty-six, to the calendar year twenty-twenty-six. That would be in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. So as Mr. Milano said, um, it would be difficult, but I think it might be possible. And I think that'd be really important to everyone. So now, any questions, any of the members doing? Then before we get into question, I don't know if you want to do it before question five or in the middle question, whatever you, whatever you want to do. Why don't we wait till we get to question five? We'll do that. How's that? Questions, comments?
One question I, one question, is that okay?
Yeah, I just want to say that Mr. Zoll is on Zoom, so just make sure, this is, just, if you're gonna, a question, just raise your hand so I can see it because I'm working around Zoll over here. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I see in the forecast here, no contribution to stabilization funds. And it is my understanding that our bond rating is based on that percentage. And so, um, you know, as our, our budget increases, that percentage is going to drop. So, um, what, I, I just wonder what your thoughts are on that issue.
It's one of the many factors a ratings agency will look at when they're rating the town. It's not the sole factor. They'll look at our fund balance more generally. So if we're, um, returning, if we're having large free cash generated each year, then that will be looked at in coordination with the stabilization fund. So it's, it's one of the many factors they look at. It's not the sole one. The purpose of that preliminary fiscal twenty-six outlook and forecast was to say, adding nothing out of the normal in, where do things stand? So say the board in town, we wanted to, you know, keep or shoot for six percent of our budget to be in stabilization funds. That would require, you know, upwards of a half-a-million-dollar contribution, which would add a half-million dollars to that budget. So it's not off the table. I was, I was preparing a kind of drilled down, no, nothing extra budget to show where even that leaves us in terms of trying to make up the deficit. So, um, would we want to make a contribution to stabilization in twenty-six? I would say yes, especially since we did not in twenty-five. We did in twenty-four. We had strong interest income of four-hundred-thousand dollars. So in one year, you know, that went up by a million dollars, of, of which only five-hundred-thousand was taxpayer dollars from the budget. So that's positive, but I think we would want to look at twenty-six as an opportunity to make another contribution, to keep paying that down. I think it's also important when we're thinking about stabilization funds, what are our other pressure points on our budget in terms of long-term liabilities? You know, the pension fund got fully funded this year. So that's where in a position few communities in Massachusetts are. So do we need less reserves? No. But do we have more flexibility than other cities and towns? Yes. And then what are we doing in terms of our other long-term liability, which is health insurance benefits for retirees, you know, classified as OPEB? We're paying down a million and a half dollars into OPEB at a rate many, few communities are doing. So we're, we're making strides on some of those long-term liabilities, and those are things the ratings agencies also like to see. So it's, it's a factor. It's not the only one. In twenty-six, would we want to look at a stabilization fund contribution? I think yes. And that's something we'll talk about as we progress through this process.
But this four-point-six-million deficit is based on not putting anything in?
Right.
Okay. And the other, could I ask another question?
Sure.
The other question I had is, um, in this expenditures outlook, we're predicting level surface forecast, four-point-four percent in twenty-twenty-six and five-point-one percent in twenty-twenty-seven for the schools. And, um, we just had in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, it was five-point-five percent was allocated. But with the two-million dollars that we went over, we actually were eight-point-nine percent if you add those numbers up. And for fiscal, for this current fiscal year, the increase was nine-point-two percent. They had asked for eleven-point-one percent. So we're saying here that twenty-twenty-six is going to be four-point-four and twenty-twenty-seven is going to be five-point-one. Seems to me to be a little bit unrealistic.
It's the.
But I mean, that's what this four-point-six is based on, right?
That is, yeah, the right way to think about it is if the school budget went up four-point-six percent, we're looking at a deficit, um, of around four-and-a-half million dollars.
Four-point-four percent.
Four-point-four. So if it's higher, it'll be greater. If it's lower, it'll be lesser. So.
So this year, we just finished nine-point-two, and next year, we're going to ask for four-point-four.
It is.
That's, that's our forecast, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the budget process, we.
Okay.
Everybody makes asks, and we try to come to a budget.
Shouldn't a budget process be worst case?
We try to incorporate a range of, um, a range. But for now, we, and we had a conversation with the school department about where that might be. But again, we're in, we're in August. They haven't submitted any information. I am trying to take advantage of where things stand and the information we have to kind of set expectations as where things might be, knowing that a lot can change over the next several months. And, and again, this, this is meant to be just maintaining, not adding. And that goes for both, that goes for town departments as well. And we know their needs across the board in terms of the town departments.
We were also level funding at nine-point-two percent this year.
No, that, in the fiscal twenty-five budget incorporates, um, keeping grant-funded positions, maintaining positions that were previously funded by ARPA funding, by ESR funding. So federal funds that augmented the services the school department delivered, as well as town departments delivered, were then being rolled into our budget in twenty-five. So that's why twenty-five is particularly high increase in what was approved by voters. But we did the same thing in the town departments with the police department. We, um, funded a mental health commission that was funded by ARPA, and at the health department, a social worker funded previously with federal fundings, now, um, on the tax, uh, taxpayer, on the tax levy.
And is the teacher's contract renewal included in it?
No, that's the, uh, big unknown for, uh, town and schools. Contracts expire at the end of fiscal twenty-five.
So if we, four-point-six million is low?
It, it, it accommodates potentially salary increases.
Well, these, these assumptions are best case. Four-point-four, we just did nine-point-two. It's going to drop from four-point-four, from nine-point-two to four-point-four. Is, I, I just, my, I don't have the numbers. I can't see them in front of me, but. Wait a minute.
I was going to respond to that, just that piece.
Mrs. Zoll, right, or Ms. Bradley, yours first?
I don't mind, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I just want to respond to that last piece, which is, of cour, we have no idea what the state gives us, and we won't know until January. So part of the budgeting process, which is something that I've been proud to be doing for the last eight years in this town, is that we work with unknowns right now. So it's not, it's not that it's going to be nine-point-one next year. We have no idea what that's going to be. It actually could be a lot lower than that. We had a thing that happened this year that had to do with fed transportation that the state threw on the town. We didn't know that that was going to happen, right? But we could come in way lower like we have in the past. So to say that these numbers aren't, you know, legit is, is, I think, a little bit, um, well, to say that they're low, we don't know that they're low because nothing has come in yet. It's too early for us to predict what will come in from the state and what will come in per pupil. So I think there's a, a lot of factors here that we have to play with before we can actually hold this four-point-six to anything.
And that's what, what he's trying to do is project.
Right.
Give us like a projection of where he thinks this could go.
I understand that. I understand it.
Mrs. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Nick, I want to start by, by thanking you for your hard work on this. I know budgeting is a thankless, uh, task, and I, I know that you get some folks that are telling you that you're being too conservative, some folks telling you you're not being conservative enough. And, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's not a lot of fun. I just wanted, so two quick things. I think Ms. Bradley's point, uh, just now is, is an important one, and I think it also goes to one of the questions that was sort of raised in the Citizen Speak around when do we get a perfect budget number? The answer is we never get a perfect budget number. We're still, we're, you know, we're, we're just now closing out FY twenty-four. We've been out of that year for, for a month plus now. And, uh, and we still don't know how FY twenty-five is going to shape out. We can make, we can make good educated estimates based on past experience, but of course, we always have X factors that can, can throw things one direction or another. So I, I don't think, um, waiting for a specifically perfect budget number is, 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 is good policy. Nick, I know that you guys met with, I think you and the town treasurer and Amy met with, uh, the S and P around our town's bond rating and, and per, um, Mr. Cohen's question, and, and I think also per some of the Citizen Speak. Was there any discussion about, um, the new school?
Uh, yes. So, um, we've forecasted to S and P, um, last year in our ratings call around this time as well, that the town was moving towards a potential school project. So it was on their list of questions coming into the call today. We provided them an update, um, in terms of cost, in terms of timeline. And they asked us to provide them an update tomorrow once, um, there was clarity as to what that timeline might look like. So they're well aware that a school project is coming down, potentially for a vote in Milton, and aware of the costs. And, um, yeah, so I think that's it. Sorry.
Okay. And they're, and they're, uh, they have been aware of the, you know, that, because this is not a, not a sudden thing that we've been considering a new school. So this is something that they've been taking in consideration for some time now and, and have adjusted their bond rating accordingly.
Correct. Between the fire station projects that are coming forward and, and the new school, they've been aware of the town's intentions to increase its debt burden, um, around now. So that's been, that's been shared with them, uh, for the last, since I've been to Milton anyway. So.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, if I may, just one final question. I also understand that in the, uh, process of that meeting, there was a, a significant discussion around the non-compliance of the MBTA Community Act. Is there anything that you can, any more information that you can provide there about whether that will be affecting our, uh, bond rating?
I don't expect it to be a issue. It was part of their questions today that we talked through. They were asking for background on what happened, what the process was, what the court process was, um, and then drilled down to what the financial impact on the town was. was. So we talked about the impact on discretionary grants that we've seen. They'd asked about impact of state aid. We conveyed that there's been no impact. We expect no impact of state aid. And that ultimately, this is more about zoning than it is about financial health of the town and expects minimal impact on the town's financial standing. And, but it was, it was a subject of conversation during the call today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano, a couple of things. I know that several months ago when you went before the warrant committee, you gave some estimates of a five-year outlook in terms of what we would be down. And I thought it was somewhere around 18 to 20 million over five years that you anticipated that we would be behind. So that's one thing. The other question I have is with regards to the schools, I know they came in here, they were $2 million short with special ed. And I'm concerned because they said that they sort of drained their coffers for this. And I'm wondering, when more needs come up, how is this going to be handled? I think that's a real concern is Mr. Pavelcheck had stated, kids come in all the time for special ed and, and obviously we want to provide those services. So I'm just trying to figure out how this will get funded. I'd also like to have an itemized information on the, the free cash and how we've allocated the free cash on both the town and the school side for the past two years or three years. We should have, we should all have that information available to us, as well as with the ARPA funding on both the school and the town side. I'm concerned that we have positions that were funded, you know, under ARPA. And now this year, we're going out and we have a lot of union contracts and so forth. And will we actually have enough money for all of this stuff? I know it's hard to predict, but can you give us an idea, for instance, of what, what unions are up this year, coming up that we're going to be negotiating with?
For, all of the union contracts expire in, as of, in fiscal '25. This is the third, we are now in the third year of those contracts. So they expire
So all of them.
On town and school side, correct.
Okay. So my concern is, you know, look, I, I don't, I don't want to go for an operational override either if we don't need to. However, I am concerned because we know what has happened in the past with some of these union contracts. And I'm wondering, do we actually have enough here to cover a lot of this? And I think that is a real concern going into '26.
Sure.
And I, I don't know that these numbers, I know it's an estimate and I know that we're, you know, it's a guesstimate, I should say, right? But we also know what's happened with some of these contracts in the past, too. So it is a little concerning that, again, you know, I'm not saying that I'm a big fan of going for this, but I do think that we have to be realistic, too, because we don't want to find ourselves halfway through the year and we're negotiating still with contracts and, you know, we're sort of caught off guard, too. Because that's happened a few times, too, or unforeseen things. And I also do want to say this, you know, many, many years ago, when I was on the warrant committee, which is a long time ago, free cash was free cash that we used for one-time use money. It was not used for positions. It was used for one time if, you know, for instance, your snow and ice budget, you have so much in that budget and you had a blizzard and you, you know, you had locked up X amount of dollars in that and then you went out and you overspent because of a blizzard and you needed that, or generator blew, or something unforeseen. But, you know, that's why I'd like to see some of this information. And so I'm hoping that you can provide for us the detailed information on these issues that I brought up.
So I can respond to a couple now and follow up on a few others. So in terms of the forecast, the forecast you're referring to is the first time we had done one. It was very conservative. And I think the deficit, you're right, it was like $22 million in year five. And I think the calculation on the school budget, for example, and all of our salaries and wage lines was 6% a year. Our costs don't go up 6% a year. The school budget doesn't go up 6% a year on a regular basis. So it was, I think, too conservative from that end, but we were trying to put one together. And as we've worked as a finance team, we've been working to bring that with a little bit more, I don't know what the right word is, just not be too conservative for conservative sake. Try to be a little bit more realistic. The current one expects, you know, that deficit to grow about $3 million a year going forward. So if we're looking, we're talking about $4.6 million-ish in '25, or in '26, excuse me, upwards of $7 million the next year, upwards of $9 the following year. And this assumes across the board, 4% on salaries, 3% on general expenses. So that should account for the collective bargaining agreements to an extent, you know, on the non-public safety unions, we were in the range of 7% over three years, which is below where we plugged some of our forecasts. So we try to build on the conservative, we try to think about those impacts of collective bargaining agreements and come up with where things stand as kind of the best guess for August in a, in our budget calendar. In terms of free cash in '25, at least I can speak to, we had about $3.3 million. $400,000 went to the school building committee for its work with the architect and the owner's project manager. Another $955,000 was in our capital for one-time capital needs, equipment. $250,000 funded our reserve fund for fiscal '25. And then $1 million paid into the retirement system for the additional money we put into the retirement system this year. So since we're fully funded, our normal cost is about $3.3 million. We put an additional million into the retirement system to build up that reserve. So talking about another place where there's reserves built into our budget. And so the balance of about, I think there's about five, $600,000, a little bit less than that, in the budget in fiscal '25 in terms of free cash. I'll have to follow up on ARPA, but there's less in '25 than in past years as we're, we're approaching the end of that. So I think those, I missed one.
No, I was just going to follow up, just to say if you could, you know, do the past two or three years and itemize it out either in a spreadsheet or something
Yep, we can do that.
For the board to look at. I think that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
So Nick, thank you for all of this. We've worked on this budget now. This will be year three. I wanted to just say that, Mr. Chair, I, I, you, you asked me to be the, the finance chair again. And so I am publicly asking you that when you have conversations with the school committee about finances, that you let me be part of that so that I can probably do my, what my position and what this board has voted me to do. I am somebody that has worked on this budget, like I said, for eight years now. And I just don't want to be, like anybody wouldn't want to be caught off guard when they're trying to do their best. So we could just
I don't meet with the school committee or the, I meet with the chair.
Yeah. And I used to meet with the, so I would meet the chair and the, so the chair and the finance committee, chair would meet together on a regular basis.
I'm fine with that.
Because then we could know what we were doing moving forward.
Well, this has been, as most people know, we're traveling at warp speed here. There's a lot of time, of seconds that are wasted. So we're being hit with a great deal very quickly.
For the budget?
For everything.
So the budget planning, anything, so you, you know, anytime that you go and talk about the budget, I would just ask for you, so that I can do my job, which is to be the finance chair, that you include me in those discussions. Even if it's after the fact, if you give me a call, you and I should be the ones discussing that with the school committee chair and their finance committee chair.
If that happens, you will, Mr. Cohen.
Along, along those same lines. Typically, I think the finance committee would be involved
You'll be meeting, yeah, as you move out, as you move forward, you'll be meeting with the schools on a regular basis, the school finance at the same time.
In this budget process?
Not until, probably not until September, October is when we start meeting as joint committees. But prior to that, the chair of the select board, and at least in the past, for the last two years, the chair of the select board, the chair of the finance committee has met with the school. And then, you know, the Nick and the Peter and all that stuff come together and try and talk about things before we advance so that we're all, we've been working to put this all on one thing, right? We are all one town. And so we don't want to separate out the schools from the fire and the police because these are all needed services.
I agree.
Okay. So that's what I just want to make sure that we're all working on the same page again.
May I, may I finish?
Sure.
So I would, I would think typically the finance committee would be involved in this. We've only met once since I've been there. So because of that, I have to guess. I, I have to make judgment calls as to what is going on here. And my judgment is that 4.6 is low. I, I don't, I'm just, my, my judgment. And the last override in 2017 for the 2018 budget, the schools were granted 1.7 of the 3.1 million. We're talking 4.6 now and probably higher.
I don't
Getting, getting, getting this voted on is critical.
I don't think he was, would recommend that as a number for potential operation.
No, no, no. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, my point is this number is going to go up. And getting this, the operational approved is the biggest threat right now to this town and the schools especially. And I just, it's a big number already. And my judgment, because I don't have all the background information, we haven't met, is that it's low. And I think it's, looking at what's going on in other towns with operational overrides, it's, I just can't stress more the need for operational first. That's me.
You all set?
Yep.
You good?
Sure. The only, I just, the closing point I would like to make is if, if there's an interest in having lower budget numbers, then you see this board plays a role in sending that message and, and holding the line to certain increases in certain departments. So we, if that's a place we want to go and, and try to limit increases in order to not have an override, that is a direction we can go in and talk about over the next couple of months, too. So.
Mr. Wells, if I may, ask one final question?
Mrs. Zoll, I didn't look up. I was looking down. Go ahead.
That's totally fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Nick, just quickly on what Mr. Cohen was saying. I mean, I think, number one, Mr. Cohen, your, the meeting schedules for the finance committee is, is typically, you don't start meeting until September. I was in that chair last year. So, but also I know that Nick and the whole team there is always very willing and able to talk to you and answer questions that you might have about the budget. So I would encourage you to, to, to reach out if you're finding yourself not, not feeling as informed as you would like to be. It's, it's, it's easy to ask questions. So Nick, my, my final question is this. It sounded like to me in your report that you were saying it's not, not necessarily a given that we will need an operational override next year. Is, am I interpreting that wrong? Because Mr. Cohen's making me feel like I didn't hear that correctly.
I think, I think I would have been, a month ago, I would have said with more, it is more likely than not, let me rephrase. I would have said there's a lot more certainty to it six weeks ago. I think understanding where those year-end results came in, which was the purpose of trying to share that, some of that information, just to give the board an update. It gives us some options that we may not had, have had in a normal year where we have much less of a year and, a much less positive year-end result. So, you know, between free cash, between state aid, maybe things start to come together to, to give us a pathway. But it would be a pathway to a level service, if not cuts budget to get by another year, not opening the door to potential, you know, added services, investments in town departments. So that's part of the calculus as well, obviously.
Thank you. Because it, it sounded, to me, it was a little confusing that Mr. Cohen was suggesting that this is the most paramount thing in the world and, and it, we may not actually, we may be able to get to a place where we don't need it or we could reduce the number. So it was just a little confusing. Admittedly, I'm here on Cape Cod and, and not in the room, so I may be missing a few things. I'm really pleased to be spending my evening on vacation here with you all. Thank you.
You shouldn't have shared that one. So can I say something? So a couple of comments. So first off, you're both right. I mean, number one, part of the reason I suggested this to Nick is for several reasons. A, number one, as the strong town administrator, he is the person, the sole person under our bylaws to responsible for submitting a balanced budget each year. That responsibility lies with him. Second thing is, as I said, and Chair Carroll quoted me on it, we're clearly in uncharted waters here. You know, 173 million is beyond anything I have imagined. And all I've been trying to do while staying in my own land is chair and meeting regularly with the chair of the school committee is find a way to get us to yes. And
Mr. Chairman, could you please speak up?
Is to find a way to get us to yes. And let me see if my microphone works. I'll bring it up a little bit. Is that better? So to me, I felt it was incumbent, I know that Nick and Amy, Glenn, I've known, Amy and, Amy and I have worked together for years, Glenn and I for years, is that we need to be looking at the whole playing field here, whatever we can do to find a way to yes. And if staving off an operational override is a way to do it, then I think it's incumbent of him and you and the finance committees to do so. Being the only person on this board who has sat and worked on multiple overrides in this community right now, I wish I wasn't, but being that I am, overrides are really hard. I've said this multiple times. Many people have heard me say it. But one of the things I can assure you of is that if we have $3 million in free cash next year and we suddenly try to go for an operational override without touching that, one of the first things that citizens will say is, why aren't you going to free cash? So while free cash could be a benefit, in this case, free cash, if we do have an operational override, if we're able to hold up an operation, free cash will have to be used. So I think it is early now, but I, I specifically asked Nick and Amy to stop looking at this. And I know that Chair Carroll has asked Dr. Burrows and Glenn to do the same thing. Please, I'm not, I'm not getting into finance committees. I'm talking chairs and the person that runs the town side, which is the town administration. So that's how we got to where we are tonight. Okay? Hope that answers everyone's question. It's, it's early, but we cannot sit back. Time is not a utility for us here today. Time is not a utility for us in any way, shape or form. Yes, no, or whatever. We are in a situation where we are responsible for maintaining the quality of life, both operationally and infrastructureally. So that's how I got to that. So don't be, if you want to be mad at someone, be mad at me. This must
Thank you. Thank you for that. I understand about the $3 million. That still leaves us a million and a half short or more. So I'm just saying that I think we just have to be aware of that. And as things go forward, I don't think we can say in stone right now that we will not.
Yeah.
Right. So it's, we have to see how things sort of shake out in a few months is basically what I'm hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Milano?
Yes. I think we have more information than we did last time we spoke about it.
Sure.
But there's still a lot more that we need to be able to say with any kind of certainty where things, with a lot more certainty where things stand.
Okay. Thank you.
We good?
Yep.
Okay. Item number five. Discussion approval request to place a ballot question for 173.4 million debt exclusion for pre-kindergarten upper middle school on the November 5th, 2024 election ballot. Questions, comments? No comments, no questions, nothing? Mr. Zoll?
You know, you can count on me, Mr. Chair.
Sure. You're on the cape with your feet up.
I wish I had my feet up. I, we're on an Airbnb. It's not as, no ottoman in this room. So, Mr. Chair, thank you again. I'm going to keep my remarks on this matter very brief, not because I don't have a lot of thoughts about this, which many of you know, but because ultimately, this is a very simple matter. The facts are these. About 20 years ago, our elementary schools approached, hit, and then surpassed their capacity. More than five years ago, seeing this continued spike that has created an unprofessional environment for teachers and a poor quality learning environment for students, the town formed a school building committee, school building committee. That committee worked tirelessly, often thanklessly, for years, looking at various options of the schools. The idea that that committee has not reported out fully on its work is just false. Last year, town meeting approved a site for the school, which had the additional benefit of, number one, not costing any money for the town because it was land that we already owned, and number two, adding more conservation land to our, our town. That decision was unanimously upheld by the state house, senate, and signed into law by the governor. The school committee, with the input of the school administrators, has now asked for us to put this to a vote in November. Our one simple task now is to turn this over to the people of Milton, once again, to determine if this is the path that they would like to take, knowing, yes, the cost of the school, but also knowing the cost of what not building the school would be for our children, for our teachers, for our ability to retain quality teachers and educators, and for the town. Those are the facts. We are not elected to be gatekeepers to prevent the residents of this town from sharing their voice. There is no argument that has been presented about why we would not allow citizens to vote, only that certain members of one group might vote one way and certain members might vote another. That is indeed an argument for putting this to the ballot. That is indeed an argument for putting this to the ballot. If the argument for not allowing citizens to vote is that you might disagree with their voice, let me be the first to welcome you to this wonderful world, wonderful world of democracy. If you are worried that the citizens might make an uninformed decision, the school building committee has committed to holding multiple open information sessions for residents to ask questions and learn more. And as they have said, this number is a ceiling, not a floor. Our job here is an easy one, allow the residents to vote. Our charter takes this decision out of our hands for a good reason. As Abraham Lincoln said in 1848, "In leaving the people's business in their own hands, we cannot be wrong." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Anyone else? Comments? Mr. Cohen?
The schools are a major component in what makes a town, something I have always believed in. What is more important than the education of our childrens and grandchildren and keeping our children here in Milton? And yes, I agree, the people should be given the opportunity to vote, but there are two things we must consider. One is the current schools today and the other is the expansion of the schools. And from what I've seen right now, the schools face an imminent fiscal threat. What would happen if the school funds were used up before the year ended? Are we willing to take that chance, this risk, with our children and our grandchildren? Thank you.
Mr. Bradley? Go ahead.
You want me to go? Okay. I don't have anything written, I don't have anything prepared. What I, what I, what I'm gonna say are things that I've said in the past. Since Sunday evening, I've received, I don't know, this looks like 50, maybe 60 emails from town residents. We have now surpassed and we are now, this is now the largest issue that our town residents have weighed in on. To me, it looks like, and I'm no mathematician, but to me, it looks like at least five to one, if not seven to one, with people in our town wanting us to put this on the ballot. We may talk about a lot of things here in our town and about how people have the right to voice their opinion and how we should listen to our neighbors and how we represent the entire town. I in no way understand how we cannot vote to put this on the November ballot based on what the town has given us to date. And by the town, I mean my neighbors. Like I said, we're seven to one, if, five to one, maybe seven to one on these emails of people wanting us to put this to the ballot. We've never experienced emails like this in my tenure. I don't care what the, what the issue was, we've never seen volumes like this. Today alone, I think we received almost 40 emails. And out of those 40 emails, there was three that were against this. We talk a lot up here and we chastise each other a lot about how we're not doing things that the town wants us to do. Well, I, case in point, MBTA communities. Town meeting voted for it and then the town overwhelmingly voted against it. Okay, breaking the law, in my opinion, that's fine, we can do that. Here, all we're doing is trying to put something on the ballot for our town to vote. I do not see how those two things are two separate things to me. I do not see how we can actually be working for our entire town when we got 40 emails today and three of them were against this. Our town has been vocal. Our town members have come to see us. They have all said, we want this on the ballot. It is not my responsibility to say whether it's right or wrong to put, you know, the number on the ballot, all this, this stuff, it's up to the townspeople. I completely support the MBTA communities, the town doesn't, okay, prove me wrong. Town should be voting on what our school system's gonna be, because you know what? It impacts them the most. Out of the people sitting currently at this table, I am the only one with children that are still in the school system. My son last year was eating lunch at 10:30 in the morning, do you know what that does to a 14-year-old boy? Let me tell you, he comes home and eats my entire refrigerator. It is not okay. Our schools are overcrowded, it is a basic fact, and I deal with this day in and day out with my child who is currently in the system. I will be voting yes for this, not because I think it's the best number or the best idea, but because I think that the people in our town have a right to vote on this. And so to me, I don't know how any of us could put our personal opinions about a town, about the school, in front of what the town should be doing to vote. So as we all take a look at this, I would hope and I would ask all of us to put aside our personal opinions on whether or not it's too much or too little or too not enough or, you know, I get a pool or I don't get a pool, Mr. O'Rourke. You know, whether we do all of those things, we have to do what the town wants us to do, that is our job. And I've listened to it for two years, about our neighbors and about what people want. And so, Mr. Chair, I will be voting in favor of this and I strongly, strongly, strongly encourage my colleagues to do the same. You wanna go first?
No, go ahead.
You sure?
Okay, I, I actually wrote something up, so bear with me. First of all, I too believe that people should have the right to vote. With that being said, I'd like to read what I have. I've always been a strong supporter of the Milton public schools, whether it was volunteering at the Tucker School where my children attended elementary school or being on their PTO board or as a member of the Milton Foundation, Milton Foundation for Education, where I was on the subcommittee to pick the teacher of the year recipients. I've always given back for our kids. Anything from being a founding member of the outdoor classrooms at all the public schools or making sure that I could coordinate with the, the after-school program at Tucker to physically bring a basketball hoop in and out of that gym, because I felt that it was inequitable, that that was the only school that did not have one at that time. And when you enter Milton High School, next time you go there, take a look in the lobby and take a look at the plaque on the wall, my family helped to contribute to placing those beautiful granite signs in front of every one of our Milton public schools. I'm getting some emails that are questioning whether or not I support the schools. I have and I always will, and those are just a few of the things. In Milton, we are so very fortunate to have the best teachers. Today, my children, who are now young adults, still praise many of their teachers for preparing them well for their future. As a member of the select board, we are the chief executive officers for the town and in that role, one of our duties and responsibilities includes the fiduciary responsibility for the town's finances. What does that mean? Well, that means that we must take into account a full picture of the town's finances when making decisions. As a supporter of our schools, I want to support putting this on the ballot. However, the school building project is just not ready at this moment in time for this ballot vote. There are still many unanswered questions, coupled with the fact that there are other looming overrides. We don't have a full picture and that's really not fair to the residents either. Some questions include, how will the cost of the new building code that we passed at town meeting affect the cost of construction? What is the cost of operating two brand-new schools? What number of personnel are needed to hire for these new schools? What is the staffing plan? What is the maintenance plan? Why is the proposed middle school's auditorium considerably smaller than the current Pierce auditorium? And how will programming include the Pierce players and be managed across these grades? At our previous select board meeting, Ms. Bradley commented that the 400,000-plus shortfall by the schools demonstrated a lack of planning. Her comments were very valid. So how can we ask the residents to vote for a plan without understanding the operating costs and maintenance for these schools? We learned at our last select board meeting that the schools were 2 million short and that they had expended their reserves when they came to our board for 400,000-plus to fill the gap. What is their plan going forward? If they were 2 million short this year, what will next year be and how much money will they need? It's evident there will be a need for an operating override, I don't think that Mr. Milano today could confirm that we definitely won't need one. What about the fire stations? Do we have enough money to complete the East Milton, East, uh, East Milton Fire Station? Will we need to go for an override to complete the Atherton Street Fire Station? It's an, it's, it is inequitable not to have done the Atherton Street Fire Station and leave that fire station to the end. What about other capital needs? What about the animal shelter project and its tight funding source and its issues? Will that be enough money or the INET project? What about our town employees such as our police, our fire, and our schools and our teachers? We have such great teachers, many who live in our town and are committed to the great education that's offered. Would we want to risk building schools without having money to staff, for the staff? What about, what about risking losing current staff by not placing an operational override first? Because of the proposal shortcomings, if the vote passed, we fail our students because we would be addressing a present need for space at some time in the future. We risk having an empty school building with no staff or the real possibility of laying off teachers who staff our current schools. Because of the proposal shortcomings, if the vote failed, then we fail our students because we would not have a plan for today or for tomorrow. I want the residents to be able to vote, I really do, but unfortunately, at this time, this is not ready. There are too many unanswered questions. While I support the schools and look forward to being able to support a ballot vote to go to the voters, I'm not feeling confident that we have enough information of the town's total financial picture nor specific answers to these questions that I just outlined in my speech here tonight. All great projects that have been supported in Milton have brought the community together. Transparency and a full picture for residents to understand is both important and essential. As leaders of the town, we need to live up to our duty of fiscal responsibility, we can be school supporters and allow a little more time to get it right to put on a ballot. These two are not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mr. Zoll, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, just a couple of quick thoughts from the speeches that were prepared and the speech that was unprepared. I'm sorry, Aaron, I, you, you do better off the cup than I do, although here we go. So, you know, I, I find it a little curious that Ms. Musto's prepared comments have many of the same questions that Mr. Fahy asked in Citizen Speak, and I'm, it's just curious to me. And what's more curious to me is that we actually know the answers to many of these questions, and this is a common tactic for disinformation when you say, well, what about this and what about that? And you throw spaghetti against the wall and hope that something sticks and hope that people don't actually notice that, oh, actually, they have accounted for the new energy codes in the building. That's, that's a question that you, that has been asked of the, of the school building committee and answered. So this repetition of the idea that we don't have answers, it's, it's misleading and it's really harmful to our town because it puts them into this question of, oh, are, are volunteer committees, like, are they doing the right thing? Have they really answered every question? And we see this time and time again where we're questioning reality.
Mr. Zoll, we've talked about this in the past, please.
Hey, maybe, maybe nobody's thought of this yet. What, how about we put another level on Glover? People keep asking me this, this question.
You're off topic.
We have debated this and discussed, and, and studied this and looked at this. Do you want to shut Glover Elementary down for a couple of years while you stick another level on the top? Sure, where are we gonna put those kids in the meantime? And how's that gonna fix overcrowding in some of the other schools? All of these options have been looked at exhaustively, this has been a five-plus-year process.
Mr. Zoll, every member has a right. Mr. Zoll, please, every member has a right to make a statement.
We don't know what we're doing, that, that this is, that this committee has not done their due diligence and that we just need magically to wait for a few more months and we will have more answers. But we know what waiting means. It means that this project will get more expensive, it means that our kids will continue to be in crowded classrooms, it means that we will lose teachers because they don't want to work in an environment that is not conducive to them professionally, that's just, just plain facts. And this other question of, how do we know about who will staff? Ms. Musto asked that question of Mr. O'Rourke literally two weeks ago and he told us, well, and actually, and Mr. Dr. Burrows was there as well. We know that many of the teachers that are currently working with those grades will move over to this new school. So the idea that this school is gonna be populated by suddenly a whole swarm of new teachers, that's fallacious, it's not true. And we can do better as a select board. We can, number one, remember the questions that we've already asked and not continue to. I'm sorry? I can't, I can't hear if somebody's interrupting me.
So if you'd please, you're, I'm, I'm speaking to his chair, I'm asking you to please stop, you are out of order.
I'm sorry?
You are out of order.
Why am I out of order?
Because you will not stop speaking.
Mr. Chair, you just muted me and you said I'm out of order, but I don't know what I said that's been out of order.
I did just mute you because you will not, I've spoken to you five times, I've tried to ask you to stop and you've just spoken right through me.
But you can't hear anything on Zoom when you're being, if you raise your hand on the, on the Zoom, I could see that, but I didn't hear that you were asking me anything.
Ms. Musto, please, please keep it brief, I don't want.
Thank you. I do have to remark, because this was a personal, basically, attack on my character, and I wrote this myself, Mr. Zoll, I am smart, I can write things myself, and I did. And these things that I thought of were things that I've been thinking about and I got partial answers when Mr. Pavelcheck and the chair, the superintendent came. But I want more concrete answers and I think it's okay to get more concrete answers to questions. And I'm not saying that I don't want to put something on for a ballot vote, I am saying I want more information on the whole picture because when we're going out to the residents, they need to understand what the big picture is here. And I think we have an obligation because we have a fiscal, we have fiscal responsibility. And I find it quite offensive that you constantly go after me and try to demean me and, and as a female, I find it even worse that you are constantly going after me. It's offensive.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that briefly?
Mr. Zoll, you cannot, no. You do this repeatedly, you do this all the time, and I've spoken to you about this in the past. We're trying to deal with a very serious subject here and, and attacking fellow board members, but any of us, is not conducive to anything. Please. And to those who spoke out, I get it and sometimes it's a little tough in this role and just remember, even in the most difficult of times, we all call this home. I'm only gonna say a few things about this. Most of you know me, you know how long I've served this community. Listen, everyone who's come through this room, anyone who's worked on this, is correct. Do we have an overcrowding issue? Certainly we do. Does the expense concern me? It certainly does. It actually shocked me. If we didn't have a looming 5.5 to 6 million dollar override, it probably would not be as concerning to me as it is now. If anyone's offended that I asked the town administrator, his chair, to stop to work at this operational right and if there were any way to defend it off, I think that it was incumbent of me to do that. I think we have to look at every possibility. You as the citizens of this town, including the people at home, no citizen has an ATM machine that we're gonna scroll up and stick a card and then use it. I've said this repeatedly, many times, overrides are hard. The school override, when we tried to build the new schools 20 years ago, failed twice at a dollar number dramatically lower than the number we are looking at here. Now, this past weekend, I spent significant time, as I have, and I, I wanted to begin by congratulating the many residents of this town that participated in the Pan-Mass Challenge this past weekend. 192 miles in 90-degree-plus heat with extreme humidity is beyond a describable task. But in that event each year where I have worked for the past 18 years, I see the most unbelievable expressions of humanity and compassion. And in this case, we will not get a yes for any dollar amount for anything unless we show the compassion and humanity for each other. Yes, we did get a lot of driven emails by people who are motivated to write them, but I take pride in walking the streets and walking this town and being in the different aspects of this town every day. Tomorrow, when we leave this very building where you sit, the people who occupy it every single day, the seniors, will come here. For many of them, an override of this size will force them, some of them who've lived in this community for decades, to have to sell their homes and move because the cost is that high. When we talk about the expense, I think Nick and Amy and I have talked almost every day, I've had the privilege to talk with three other communities as well as three other financial planning organizations. Sorry, my mouth's still dry from the weekend. You know, currently, we usually carry a bond debt of about 37 million, or we carry a bond debt of about $37 million. If, if we were to pass a 173 million dollar override this year or any year, next year in 2024. If we were to pass a $173 million override this year or any year, next year in 2026, our bond debt would immediately rise to 90 million, and then the following year, the entire $173 million would go on our bond debt to put us over $200 million. This town has never been in an arena of that form. Two of the analysts, municipalities, were very clear with me that without school building assistance, that they thought it was a very perilous, almost impossible, would not recommend walking down something like this or of this nature. Because the risk you run for the next 30 years is, as Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Carroll know, the prior Consolidated Facilities Director, Mr. Ritchie, who was the initial and has spent almost two decades caring for the buildings in this community as well as being critically involved in the construction of the six new buildings, has said repeatedly that the cost for maintaining those buildings over the next 30 years will be significant, the capital costs we are not yet facing. And a $200-plus million bond debt will clearly impact our ability to be able, not just, not us, future leaders of this community, to tackle upcoming issues. And that, to me, is a very daunting thing, and I've said repeatedly, uncharted ones. So my thought in this really had been, I know initially I had proposed and spoken quite a bit about putting them on together next spring. I really do hope and pray, and I will do everything in my power to try and make sure that we can still push an operation, my mouth's dry, an operational override off until '26. And if that the case, I would be comfortable and I would vote in support of placing this override, debt exclusion override, on the ballot by itself next spring. The one thing I will say, and I say this to those who are in support, do not think for a second that there are those in this community who will just come out and vote yes for it. They will not. There is a reason why the first two school overrides passed, I mean failed. The third one only passed with 90%, and we're not getting anything. Matter of fact, one veteran administrator said to me the other day they could not believe that we were attempting to build a school without any SBA money. But that's the boat that we're in, as Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Carroll know very well. So I do agree, this is, there's a lot. I mean, $170 million, and I wish there was not a gun to our head. I wish we did not have to make this decision tonight, I really did. Just the Consolidated Facilities Director said to me alone today, he didn't know there were two buildings, he said, two buildings alone, you're talking two HVA systems, you're doubling the cost, just the operational cost, you're caring for two buildings versus one building. And to me, questions like that, the questions that are really important, and the questions on how much we can actually carry on our shoulders and maintain the quality of life that has existed here for over 360 years, just really makes me believe that pushing this tonight is not the time to do it. So I am willing to schedule a vote in the spring, be it there together or apart, but my goal is to have this override, this debt exclusion override, be scheduled for next spring by itself. And that's really all I have to say about it. So any additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion.
This will be a roll call vote.
If you give me one second, I'll pull up the right Google window here that's got the motions. I would like to make a motion to approve a ballot question on the November 5, 2024 election ballot as follows. Shall the Town of Milton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to design, construct, and equip a new middle school with or without pre-kindergarten?
I'll second.
Motion remains second. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Cohane?
No.
No, no. It's a roll call because Mr. Zoll is not here. So a roll call vote.
I say no.
Mr. Cohane, no. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Myself, I would be a no.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, the board to consider placing the same question, but with the number of $150 million. My understanding is that you are aware that the School Building Committee has explored options to remove the pre-K from the plan, which could get the number down to around $150 million. And I would also like to remind everyone that charitable contributions, foundations can step in. So again, this is a ceiling, not a floor, but I would like us to consider the same number, or I'd like to say the same language with the number of $150 million. So my motion will be to move to approve placing a ballot question on the November 5, 2024 election ballot as follows. Shall the Town of Milton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to design, construct, and equip a new middle school with or without pre-kindergarten?
I'll second.
Hold on, I don't believe, so I was aware of that, but I'm, I believe that's outside the scope of our responsibility at this point. We have, we have, we have an amount that was recommended officially by the School Building Committee that was voted by, I am aware of it, but it was voted by the school committee, I do not believe we can alter it at this point.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have Town Council rule on whether or not this is out of order. And I'm also still, I would love in the future to hear from you specifically about why I was out of order earlier, because I couldn't hear what was being said to me. But I would like Town Council to weigh in on whether or not this is within the scope of discussion.
I will gladly advise you in that, and I don't know whether Town Council is here.
He is not. He is available. I would just, in terms of what the board, the ballot question the board can place does not include a number. If the board wanted to discuss a ballot question that excluded pre-kindergarten, the ballot question could be, could just end at middle school. In which case, the proposed ballot question would not allow for money to be spent on a pre-kindergarten. But the ballot question can't say anything about a cost. The town meeting is what appropriates it.
The ballot question can't have a number in it.
No, but we're going to have to, we're going to have, and it's right, people who think, I agree, I think it's going to be over $173 million. So, look, Mrs. Zoll, I hear you on that. I would not change, based on, look, we're ahead of our skis here. If we think we're going to suddenly reduce this to 150, it just, outside of what the recommendation was, and I waited all week, I actually called Mr. Milano yesterday to see if there had been any change, there was not, so.
Mr. Chair, we have the school.
I get that, I get that.
But he could speak to whether or not this would reduce it.
This came from the school committee.
Well, they're both sitting, I mean, Deshaun's sitting right there. He could say whether or not, as the School Building Committee, whether or not that this would be reduced. I mean, how much was a pre-K? I think we saw in the estimates, it was like $25,000.
It was a whole separate building.
It is a whole separate building.
Right, so that would alleviate a lot of that stuff. So is there, is there opposition to us putting forth to our members here on the Select Board to vote for what we need, which is a new middle school?
I would not entertain that at this time. That's my thought. I think we're way ahead of our skis to do this at the last minute.
I don't think you have the right to not entertain it, Mr. Chair. This is fully within the scope of the discussion.
Well, we've already voted, Mr. Zoll.
I've made a second motion, and it's been seconded.
It has been seconded.
You don't have the ability to shut down discussion on this. I know that you don't want people to vote in November. I know that you're probably going to vote no on this again, but we want, there are people, a lot of people, who just want to have their voices heard. And I'm saying, let's see if we can give the School Building Committee a number like 150, which is a number that you yourself have posited as a potential number. See if they can get down there.
I was hoping for 120, thinking we could come back with good news at the beginning. They blew me away at 170. I picked 120, thinking 150, so we'll come back at 120, we'll have a win right from the gate. And that didn't happen, now, did it, Mr. Zoll? So it's just, I'm comfortable doing it this way at the last minute. I am not, and I repeat, I'm not against a vote, I'm just, I think we have a lot more work to do, and I am more than willing to schedule this vote this spring.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of that, in light of your refusal to entertain motions, in light of your refusal to continue to put the Affordable Housing Trust on the agenda so that we can hear about plans that you and Ms. Musto are creating to go to the Attorney General to try to re-change something that should really be brought to the town's attention. I'm logging off of this meeting under protest.
Okay.
Mr. Zoll, Mr. Zoll, can I say something real quick? There's a motion on the table, so can we just go back to Robert's rules for one quick second? So I happen to know what those are. So there's a motion on the table, we just had a discussion around it, we now have to ask if there's any further discussion, and then we have to take a vote on the motion on the table because it's not, you can't rule it out of order.
I didn't say that. I said he was out of order.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine, but now we have to take a vote on what is on the table.
I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that.
So, Mr. Zoll, just.
I was, I misunderstood you, Mr. Chair. I thought you were saying that the motion was out of order.
I did too.
So, can I comment before we vote?
Yes, because we're in discussion time.
This is just not how we do business, but I'm like, and I appreciate Chair Carroll trying this last minute, but it's just, there's too many questions that I have at this point to just, I think it's actually, I think it could actually get to a lot lower than that, but that's not, we don't have the time for that. So my vote's really not going to change. I'm at the same point, I'm ready to go in the spring, but let's get our ducks in a row and use all this time. And I, I'm sorry that we have our gun to the head, but this is not the way I'm making a decision, which is the most significant financial decision any board has ever made on behalf of this town.
It's the way that the town makes decisions. The way to make decisions is to let the people decide.
I'm aware of that, Mr. Zoll. Not my first rodeo. So, roll call vote. Mr. Cohane?
No.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Uh, no.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Myself, no.
All right, I'm still leaving this meeting under protest. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, thank you all. This is not a done issue. We have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to that. Chair Carroll, especially while you're here, I thank you for all of your time and effort that you have put on this. Thank you. Okay. Item number six, American Rescue Plan Act allocations. Mr. Milano.
Give him a minute. You want, no, just to file out. Thank you.
I know it's cold in here.
Should bring a coat.
I should, next time.
Always, always, even in the winter. It's colder in here in the winter.
My wife and I at home, she's got it on zero.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So American Rescue Plan Act allocations, as the board is aware, we talked about this at our last meeting, and some concerns were raised over a potential impact to broadband and what that might look like going forward. So just to kind of reiterate where we were is looking for a way to quickly resolve the school budget deficit at the close of fiscal '24. It was my thought and my recommendation that the fastest and most efficient way to do so would be to access money. ARPA funds held by the Norfolk County in its category under revenue replacement, which is what we had previously allocated for broadband, that category is the broadest and easiest to use on things that government works on. So in order to resolve the deficit, get the money in the door by the August 30 deadline to do so, it was my opinion that that was the fastest and cleanest way to do so. The board approved doing so, but we did have some feedback and requests to, you know, go back to the drawing board, see what we can do to not impact broadband while also resolving the issue that we had. So since then, we followed up again with the county, who opened the door to changing some allocations to assist us in this effort, and doing so as long as we could find eligible costs in the fiscal '24 budget that could be expended with ARPA funds following ARPA's rules. There's no category for school costs. There's a broad category under public health that allows certain monies to be used on school issues. So we have, in the intervening time period, submitted an application to the county to do so. You know, thanks to Amy and Lisa and our accounting team, Glenn Pavelcheck, the school department, on going back to the school budget, kind of looking at it a little bit differently to try to find ways to move money to a eligible expense under ARPA. The county agreed to look at it as soon as we submitted an application. So that's, the application was submitted, the board has approved $450,000 for ARPA for the school department for the fiscal '24 budget. So we submitted that application. We're still currently awaiting feedback, any questions, any comments that the county might have on this separate allocation. I'm optimistic that this will work. So however, there is still a risk that they'll have further questions that might slow the approval process down, or they'll view the cost as not eligible. We tried to track very closely to things that we've done previously through Norfolk County and ARPA. So we feel decently confident that they'll be eligible, and we're hopeful that it'll be approved on a quick enough timetable to resolve the issue that we have before us. So what I would be seeking tonight is, I guess, a vote to do, to kind of reset everything, for lack of a better description. So to allocate $550,000 to broadband, as has been the long-term allocation, allocate $415,000 to the school department fiscal '24 budget, and then we'll have to resolve a final, so I should take another step back. So the reason why we're able to try to find eligible projects is two of our eligible projects will no longer be able to go forward. $240,000 for the Milton Housing Authority, they will not be able to get a contract in place by the end of the calendar year for that work. And $400,000 for Lower Guile Turf Field, while we were hopeful we would be able to use the ARPA money, that project still has yet to receive final DEP approval, and that likely, that will as well not be able to be under contract before the end of this calendar year. So this opens up for the town $640,000 that has to be spent according to the rules that the Treasury has laid out. So $550,000 for broadband is previously approved, $415,000 for schools, and then the balance, we recommend at this point, putting towards sewer infrastructure as we have an ongoing eligible project that it could go to, and that would be, again, the fastest way to get that kind of out the door. So recommend those three allocations of our final Norfolk County ARPA monies.
Go to the motion.
Question?
Go ahead, question first.
What did we take out of the broadband?
$415.
And what are we putting back in now?
The $415.
I thought you said $515.
The total allocation was $550 to begin with, and then last time.
We're putting the $415 back.
Yeah, we're just kind of resetting that amount. You know, sorry, yes. It sounded like a lot more than that.
It did.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm trying to follow this a little bit. So the, just back up a little bit. So how are we covering the school cost? They needed $415, and then $415 for?
So $415 for schools coming out of what had been money for Lower Guile and the Milton Housing Authority.
Okay.
Which we're going to borrow.
Okay.
Am I right? We're going to borrow that, we're going to borrow.
Okay. And how come we didn't have these ideas before?
So they are on the table, it just was my, my feeling based on everything the county had been relaying to us is that you're not going to get this in time, and the fastest and most effective way to get your money is to do a revenue replacement, especially if you're doing past expenses. So thinking about what is available and what can we do in time to close a deficit by the time we need to under finance law, those are the two factors. We don't have 100% certainty that this will work, but they've opened the door, we think it's worthwhile to pursue and have the opportunity to go back if we have to, if this isn't going to work, but I think it will, it'll reset everything as before and finalize some of these allocations.
Okay, and then just in regards to that, so just afterwards, if we can have some kind of an itemized thing, like I said at the beginning of the meeting with the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I can, I have that, I can distribute it to the boards tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Quick one. Why are we having to do this?
Which piece?
Do this change from where we were?
Because we put the broadband project at, at risk by changing that allocation and by giving, by the county expressing flexibility, we can.
So this is to get the money back, basically, broadband?
Pretend last meeting didn't happen, this half of it, and I will be grateful for it.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it, I just wondered.
Quick question, when do these funds need to be expended? Because I know that they have, they have deadlines, and I thought that it was, I actually thought from one of our previous meetings that you had to identify by June and then expend by, is it 2026?
Yes, there's several different deadlines, I'll try to. Yes. There's several different deadlines. I'll try to explain each of them. So the original deadline for all of our grants from Norfolk County for the ARPA funding was June 30th, 2024. However, they've been, they have opened the door to some extensions past that date. The federal deadlines are to have a contract in place or to obligate the funds by December 31st, 2024, to spend the funds by December 31st, 2026. What the county has been expressing over and over and over again to cities and towns is they don't want projects to go past the 2024 deadline, but they're allowed to under the law. If they do, they'll have increased monitoring, but it can happen. They're just trying to, it would be in their best, they would prefer that everything's spent by this calendar year. The rules allow for spending beyond that. In this case, the broadband project likely would go past December 31st, 2024, but the contract will have been in place before then.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, that was some dramatic change in temperature, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a motion? Oh, oh, do you have a question? Sure. Want to make a motion? This is yours.
I don't have anything about it.
All right. So I will make a motion to?
Allocate $550,000 to broadband, $415,000 to the schools fiscal '24 budget, and $225,000 for sewer infrastructure.
That is my motion.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you. And I'll keep you updated. As I said, we have some deadlines to meet here. And hopefully, we are able to meet all of them, but I'll keep the board apprised in case not.
Okay. Item number, Ms. Bradley will be leaving the meeting. She'll be excused for the night. Item number 10? No, item number nine. So this is maximum useful life for department equipment authorized by the vote of town meeting passed May 1st, 2023, Article 4 pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These projects were approved at the May 2023 town meeting. The select board has to set the useful life for the departmental equipment. What we're requesting is that you do so in accordance to how the useful lives are set by the town meeting as well. So it's just confirming the actions of the town meeting and they're laid out in the packet and in the information we provide to the board. And to explain that, that means we're going to borrow up to that duration for each of these capital items.
So. Go ahead, Ms. Musto. So the motion would be to move the maximum useful life right there?
Okay, so move to approve the maximum useful life of the listed departmental equipment authorized by the town, I'm sorry, authorized by the vote of the town meeting passed on May 1st, 2023, Article 4 pursuant to general law, C44, Section 7, with the useful lives identified in the town meeting vote.
Do we need to read the list? Do we need to read the whole list? Do we need to read that list?
I think you can say as presented on the list in our packet.
As presented in the list in our packet.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Unanimous. Okay. Item 11, no, 10. Discussion boards committees appointments or reappointments. What was included on the agenda below?
Mr. Chair, we missed item eight on the feasibility study. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Proposed feasibility study on the former Milton Fire Headquarters. I jumped fire because he spoke. I just asked through fire when you said defer. I deferred a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, we have a proposal for $40,000 from Context Architecture, which is the architectural firm that designed the Fire Headquarters project and the rehab of the former Fire Headquarters project. And it would study the second and third floor for code, compliance, elevator, fire stair, et cetera, to figure out what we can put up there. The, the study will include youth space, town offices, meeting offices, I'm sorry, offices, and then meeting rooms. So thinking about what we could, what we need, what fits, how much it would have cost, and broad numbers. So then we can make some next steps. And we have $50,000 appropriated for this, and the proposal's for $40,000.
Do you have a motion?
I do, but I have a question. Go ahead. You go first.
It was just brought to me. That's why I'm asking that, do we, do we have any idea what this expense is going to be to do this?
$50,000 is built into it.
No, no, no. That's, that's.
No, we don't know. So the feasibility is to tell you, give you options on what it could be. Pick an option, then put it on our piece. Options would give us kind of an idea what the cost would be. I would say, depending on what the feasibility presents, you're going to have a vast array, a vast array of costs.
Okay. Because we, we, moving forward, we do understand that there's an elevator involved, and there's some big money.
Yes.
Right. So going in, we know to make that second floor accessible to the public, it needs an elevator, likely also needs a second stair on the Walnut Street side, most likely. But then, depending on what goes up there, meeting rooms, offices, youth center, it may need additional bathrooms, which those get expensive fast. It may need, so it's a question of what is, what is possible and what is round numbers to do so? And all of the options will have a base cost for the elevator, the stair. And then depending on occupants, occupant load and everything else, we may have additional costly items. And the, the answer might be leave it vacant for the time being, and it's, it's safe to be vacant for now, so.
I'm wondering with all that's going on. You know, I, I love the, don't get me wrong. I'd rather have us beat over there, but with everything that's come up, it's just one more.
So in the, in the design and award of the contract for the construction of the new Fire Headquarters, which is now, what, five years old it's built, this was included in there. This was voted on and included in the project.
What was?
The feasibility. The money from the feasibility study comes from, and part of the rationale behind that is it's very rare that we get extra space. So instead of just let it sit in there, someone gives us an idea. You, you are correct in the elevator. The police station has had a request for an elevator for probably over 20 years in their capital request. It's never been installed, so.
This, this would have to, part of this.
Oh, if you were to do, yeah, it would have to.
It would have to happen, you know. It would have to happen. I, I, I just want, you know, we're not going to move forward with doing the work because the money is x. Why, why do a feasibility study, but whatever.
I think we are facing a point where in town hall, we're not, we don't have extra space. And we're, you know, some departments, Health Department in particular, are running, are out of space and can't expand anymore, so. But by the same time, if it's $10 million to make offices up there, like, we're not going to do that, and we're not going to recommend that. But let's get a sense of what it's going to be for $40,000. And then it can go, as we think about space more broadly across the town, it'll be a potential asset to have. And maybe build out, maybe say it's not worth it for right now.
I love the idea. It's great space. I'd love that. It'd be great. No question. I just, you know, the money's more than we can afford. Why spend $40,000 to analyze it? Whatever. Okay. Okay.
And I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, I think that, that the questions going back and forth, they were the questions I was going to ask in terms of how, how we got the funding, you know, and the fact about the elevator. So they've all been answered for me. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for a feasibility study of the former Milton Fire Headquarters.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Crane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 10. Discussion approval boards and committees appointments and reappointments. Chase on my list, yeah.
It's this one here.
I just need to see the names. You want to make the motion? Do you have the names?
I have the names here. So I'll move to appoint Fiona Jevon, Kim Johnson, Anna Morgan Barzamian to the Climate Action Planning Committee as an associate member for a one-year term.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Crane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion approval. That's the only one?
I'll move to, I'll move to appoint the state primary election warrant dated September 3rd, 2024.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These, these two are deferred, correct?
Yeah, 12 and 13 are deferred. 14. Discussion approval and application for Maureen Conlon to use the town green in Boundary of the Seville Saturday, October 5th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM for boot camp fundraiser for the council on aging. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
I read it. Then we'll take, I'll accept that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cohane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 15. One-day liquor license.
Move to approve the one-day liquor license and agreement between the Town of Milton, Milton Chamber of Commerce, and Hilton Art Center for Manning Park on Friday, September 6th, 2024, for back to business.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Crane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Milano?
Mr. Chair, I did not prepare much on my administrator's report other than, I think I spoke about it last time, but if you haven't been to Town Center, the Fire Headquarters project is, landscaping is really coming along. The whole site is coming together,